The one with the one big and solid. Yeah, not nearly.
We call meeting order, roll call.
Okay, Mayor Westover.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Woltman.
Yep.
Reese.
Yes.
And Don.
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna talk about our budget.
Well, that's more of a.
Goal setting?
Yep, planning session, goal setting session. And where I'd, I'd like to start off, and just, I guess, just know that the entire hope of the, of the meeting today is really just to spur discussion of, about things that you feel are important, and whether they're short-term goals or whether they're long-term goals. That's the, uh, the intention is really to spur some discussion, and hopefully it's a lot more of the mayor and council talking, and, and not me so much. But I do wanna start off and explain a couple, a couple things as we get started. So you see, uh, on the priority list, that is, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, that's five members in, in the mayor, five council members in the mayor. There is no, uh, rhyme or reason to which one is which, uh, number. So, uh, if you can figure out your own, so be it. But, uh, but really, there is no, no rhyme or reason to, to the number. So I would tell you, they're not alphabetical. Um, but this just, uh, tells you then, what, on, using the mathematical average, what do people feel are important? And it's really no surprise, I don't think, that, uh, the highest rating that would be received continues to be Lake Improvement Project, and that we would participate, uh, as much as we can in math. And of course, our biggest involvement here for the next year will be that, uh, Fish Barrier Project. Underground Electric, really, we're coming up to the end of that, but hopefully, uh, we'll get that finished up here in the next couple of years. Okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna highlight a few of these things as we work our way down, and please, uh, interrupt with any of, of the things that you'd like to discuss too. But I wanted to discuss the Camp Crescent improvements. And that would be that, uh, that Camp Crescent project for the, for the concrete pads and, and for the sewer line improvements. And, uh, when we discuss our, our budget proposals here over the upcoming weeks, that'll be in there then as a, uh, as an initial project to see how we can, uh, potentially fund that Camp Crescent improvement. Next thing I'd like to highlight, uh, is encourage the use of infill housing lots. And then, uh, you know, it ranks real high. People can, I think, see the benefit of, of doing that, and you're utilizing the infill lots that already have infrastructure there to serve them. Okay? But then the question is, how do, how do we go about encouraging the use of those lots? Or, um, if we, when we continue to work with our, with our housing committee, we're working to establish a, a foundation, uh, to do housing and economic development projects. They'd be able to, uh, to own land, it'd be a 501(c)(3) entity that, that could own land, be able to accept, uh, financial contributions, and really, they're a way to facilitate projects like this. But, uh, then when you're talking about encouraging the use of infill lots, then, can we get to the point where we'd work with some of these privately held lots and somehow acquire those lots, which most likely then would include having the city purchase them somehow? Again, we'd have this, uh, housing, uh, nonprofit housing authority in place that could be able to own and transfer properties. But I'm sure at some point, some of the money to purchase that would come from the city. So I'm interested in your, in your thoughts on that.
How many lots are, uh, figured there's available?
Oh, I, we've inventoried those, you remember that, Vicki? About how many lots we, we have? Boy, it seemed like there's fifteen right off the bat.
I don't have it with me, but it was, I, I don't think I do. It was quite a, quite a few more than what I think people would imagine. Um, the one thing I would say about this is, um, I just happened to be visiting with a, a resident one day that has a lot, and, and I was saying that we were kind of working on this, and we're looking at lots, and I said, you know, would your lot, would you consider, you know, selling your lot or anything? And as the conversation went, went on, he said, you know, I might even consider donating it if it was gonna go to the city. So I think the housing authority is, is a good place to handle that. The, the housing authority would be set up to handle anybody that was gonna decrease some land to us or, um, purchase land, and then they, you know, they're, they're able to sell it to a developer cheaper. They, they'll just have a lot more flexibility than the city has. But I don't, I don't remember how many lots got, and I don't think I.
I would think it would be better of Meg to deal with the person that's interested in buying a lot, and if the, if the person, you know, but has a house there and wants, has a lot of settlement and wants to, and that, get them two to work together would probably be better than the city getting involved.
Sure, you know, I guess just however we can facilitate a deal is good. But like, so, um, we host Northwest Iowa League on Thursday. Program for the night is about, uh, homes trial, which is a, an initiative where prisoners learn trades while they're at the, in prison in, in Newton, but they build these homes, and the homes then can be transported around the state. And they're really, uh, actually low cost, it's a low-cost alternative, try to get new homes into some communities. But if we said we would be interested on, in a home like that, undoubtedly, the, the organization's gonna look back at you and say, okay, you know, do you have the site that, that's ready for this? And you say, yep, you know, we know, we know the neighbor who owns this thing, and we can try to facilitate a deal, or you could say, the city, uh, or, or our, our nonprofit foundation owns this property, and we'd be ready to accept a, a home when it rolls around. So, um, just knowing that when you work through some of these, these housing programs, having property available at little to no cost will be, uh, will set you apart from anybody else who, who might also be looking for these.
And if I might add, you know, especially like, you know, when we talked about the evacu people that don't live in Lakeview because housing is so, um, high-priced, you know, this is something that we kind of looked at as, you know, like, some of them have done some pocket neighborhoods, which we're not gonna do. But when they set up that housing authority, they were able to purchase the land, then they're eligible for all kinds of grants as a nonprofit and things they brought in. And so they, they had some housing done over in Eastern Iowa that then they were able to, one had a developer come in, they got the land, the city got the land through their housing authority, and then it was given, sold to the developer very cheaply. Another town used, um, like this Iowa prison thing, and, um, was able to get these homes to people at a cost of about a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty thousand, which, you know, is a lot cheaper than most of them somewhere in Lakeview. So anyway, that target, you know, they've talked a lot about, the community has talked a lot about the evacu people and how we're not, they don't live here in town, and we're not getting, you know, the money that we put into that facility. And, and, you know, that just comes up a little bit. I think this is kind of a tool to maybe turn that to our favor a little bit.
So do you, with some of these open lots, and I guess, is the neighbor trying to control it? Is there quite a few of them, you think? Or do you think there's just individuals that got these lots and don't wanna build at the present time? Or what? Got any, any idea on how?
Yeah, well, the feeling is that, yeah, the, by choice, the neighbor has purchased these to, to either have no neighbor next to them, or to, uh, to control who their neighbor is. So just where the housing committee is right now, it's really still at the inventory stage about inventorying these lots. So we've, we've learned where they're at, but we have not made a lot of contacts with, with folks about whether they'd ever be interested in doing anything with that.
So Vicki, you said something about the range of a hundred and forty to a hundred and fifty thousand. So the people that are evacu, are they gonna be willing to come in and, can they afford that? Is that what they're thinking as far as the range goes for, um, affordable housing?
Well, I think it's a part, um, you know, when they do this, um, 360 program, these employees are able, that we would work with the employer being evacu in this case, and then that these, these people are able to apply online, they do their financing online, they do everything online in the privacy of their own home, so that they're not, you know, exposing themselves as much. And they see if they can afford it and whatever. That 360 program deals with that quite a bit. I would say that one thing just to keep in mind, I don't wanna start a whole other conversation tonight, but just like, you know, the, the shouts that we have going up, you know, there are people that do not want one of them next to them, and they're concerned about that on their lots. And so, um, you know, that's, that's a little bit of it too, I think, when they wanna control. I don't know if they wanna control who their neighbor is, or they wanna control what kind of, um, home is going up there. So I don't think that's the case with all of them. I think some of them just bought the lot, and now, you know, and, and, you know, like this guy said to me, he said, I'm getting kinda tired of Moller, and so he said, I, I, I would maybe work with you on it. So I, I just think it's an untapped market that we, we need to look at.
You know, our, our neighborhood there, they have, but we have a, when they bought lots, they bought two or three, and there's sad ever since.
Yeah, sure. Um, next thing that I wanted to bring up, just a real quick discussion there. Loop feed water mains on West Street. So just know that, uh, when you get down to Pauline Redden's old house, that's a, that's a stubbed dead-end water line down there. And we've, we've had this on our, on our list of potential projects for years, because there's water quality issues down there. But, uh, to the extent that when Pauline would live there, we'd go down two or three times a year and flush the water, uh, flush the fire aggrons. I mean, and that's all that it ever took to, to attend to that. But, um, I guess I bring this up now, more dealing with that, uh, that Redden property there, and whether you'd ever see any development happen there? If, if there was some development in the old, uh, solid hard property that, that required water usage, we may look at this again as a, as a higher priority project at some point.
So how would you run that then? How would that change, how would you do that?
Pardon me?
How would you change that then? If you, if you, you, you're talking about in the future that you may eliminate the loop?
Yeah, no, that you create a loop, that we go from West Street over to Lake Street.
Okay, okay. So what does it do now? Does it stop?
Yeah, so say there's, it, it's, it's a dead end there at Pauline's house. So I think there's a water main that would come down Sixth Street, Sixth to West, but not down Seventh Street. So, yeah.
I see, okay, I, I get it.
So there's one of them up at school too?
Right, and you, and you see, that's always listed there too, about, about, uh, uh, loop feed, loop water feed up at school. And, and that can, uh, do some, some things to affect, uh, water quantity that's delivered up there, but also the pressure, you know?
Sometimes you're done.
Yeah.
What kind, what kind of money are you talking to?
That's a substantial project up there. I think, I always recall that the loop for that would go back in back of Jim Wallace's house. That's, I think, was how it was school, up to the school, yeah.
Cause that's vacant in the, all there across, all the way across there. In back there, in back of Jim's house.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
But, uh.
That may be one thing to look at, if, if one, there's gonna be any of the development up there.
Right.
Pretty good.
Good, thank you. Next thing that I like, I did highlight here is a community or event center. And again, just, I was more thinking about what Dave was talking about last time, about providing information for the public, and, and how do you, how do you get to that stage where you can offer solid information, uh, to the public about a proposed project?
Well, I, um, I've been thinking about it too. And I, I think Dave is right about, you know, his remark was, if you, if you think that, the, that you think this is a, uh, a viable project or something this community needs, then you need to take it to the community and see that they agree. So I've been thinking about that. There's, um, a couple things. I mean, we've done a couple surveys, and I'm not saying we shouldn't do another one. You know, maybe the monkey surveys aren't the way to go, I don't know. But I think they did a hard copy, the first one, when Hometown Pride was first formed. But I think that, you know, this, um, this, um, community center was part of the Great Places application that we applied for. And I think you, you cannot apply for something like that and then decide, six months later, that you don't wanna do this at all. I, I don't, I, I'm not saying that the community center should become a reality because we're a great places, but you owe it to take it to the community, you owe it to do the research, because you listed that as one of your projects, and that, and part of us being chosen was based on that. So I think, just like I thought before, I think it needs to follow a process. And at the end of the process, if it's determined that the community doesn't want this, or that we can't afford this, then that's the way it is, you know? But I, I think we've never got there, we've never determined that. And I, and quite frankly, I think we need help from Scott to get this done. I think he needs to work, it, it needs to come through Hometown Pride, and they need to do the, the legwork on this, the grassroots. They need to go out and, and find out if we have some support. And then I think it needs to be presented to the community, you know, in a, in an open meeting thing. And, um, you know, people could do, I don't even know, um, I guess I don't know what all could be done with that. I mean, I know we can't have a, a vote vote, but I, I think we can get there. I think we can find out if the community supports this. Um, I think it's the young people that, it's certainly the young people that are gonna benefit from this, not the older people. So I think the young people should have a voice. Um, and I think Scott should work with Hometown Pride to determine, and other committees, if they, if they, um, put committees together to see if, if this is a viable thing for this community, and if it is supported by the community. And I agree that it should be supported by the community, or it should not be.
And, and you're exactly right. And, and I think, um, versus the last time, um, and I, I looked at some of the rough things that, um, the mayor's been putting together and stuff, that, you know, being someone who wasn't or isn't in favor of spending the money on that property out there, uh, where it was proposed to go, um, looking at the rough things that the mayor's put together, is a lot more positive direction to bring it to the community than what was done before. Okay? Can you understand what I'm saying?
I do.
I agree.
Because number one, the scope of the project is scaled way back. Okay? Um, there's options in there as far as funding, so the taxpayers don't have to come up with the money to fund it. Okay? And then the other piece of that was, if it gets built, what is gonna be the cost to the city? And because of the overheads so substantially lower, that part, piece of the projects is a lot lower than what those.
Originally was.
Original surveys. So if you could convince the people that, um, like I said before, no money's gonna come out of their pocket, um, uh, on the project, I think it'd be more viable presentation.
If you have, I mean, does that make sense? Yeah, if you have, uh, you gotta have a kind of a business plan with it too, what's gonna?
Yeah, that's kind of what I was getting at.
Yeah.
But you're talking apples the way it was before, oranges the way it is now.
Right, well, you, you just, it's a whole process. You know, you, you start with something and, and it, you know, it goes one way, and then you think, well, obviously that's not gonna work, or that's supported, and so you look at it again. Um, I, I have talked to Jimmy Thompson at the Iowa Economic Development in, in Des Moines, and he's offered his assistance, you know, a little bit. I don't know how involved that would be, but I just think we need somebody that kind of knows more than we do about how the grants work, and how the funding works, and how other communities have done, and, and so Scott has a good relationship with him. Um, and I, I just feel like, um, Scott, Scott, I, I just would like to see Scott take a role in this, working with Hometown Pride, working with whatever. Because before we take it to the community, which is part of the problem last time is, I think we have to have real nuts and bolts. We have to know exactly what it's gonna cost, pretty much, and, and exactly how are we gonna run it, and exactly what is that gonna cost? And so, yeah, I think there's a lot, a lot, a lot of data that has to be compiled prior to a, a public meeting or a decision to go ahead with this.
Correct.
And I would not support a decision made without public input. But I just, I think, first, first, they need to, to do the, the legwork on it, and that never got done last time, it, and we're not there yet on this. There's a lot of work yet to be done. And I just think Scott and the mayor should be heading that up. I think it's part of Scott's job to do that, I, I do. So I guess I'd like to, I don't know if tonight's the night, or if I make a motion the next council meeting. I, I don't, I guess I need some guidance here on protocol. But I would like, either council approve of Scott working with committees to see if this is a viable entity for this community.
I don't know that we need a motion on that, we just need to tell him.
Just.
Okay, you tell him to.
Thanks a lot.
What happened to the, when we, this got voted down before, why didn't it get voted down? Or didn't we vote on it?
I think we did.
It was five million dollars, is what the.
Yeah, the cost was a big.
I thought it worked.
Well, what, what we're discussing now, we're not discussing voting it down or, uh, voting on it. We're just, um, talking about, and it's gonna come before the public, it's just how we're gonna go about it, or who's gonna be responsible for bringing it to the public, or things like that.
Well, you have to, you have to have accurate data to give the public. No, it doesn't do anybody good, it, it's all good.
And, and I'd be opposed to spending ten thousand dollars to get that data.
Right, right.
You know what I'm saying? Cause we've already spent before, ten thousand dollars for a study that didn't look very good.
Right, right.
You're right.
That's why I think Scott could do more, and I think, you know, the Iowa Economic Development, team can maybe be helpful. We'll just have to see how, you know, how they, how that goes. I just think we don't have a, a direct path yet, we have to figure it out.
So just, just a couple things for you. Just, there's, there's one thing in particular that's, that's been hanging out there for, for a while through Hometown Pride, and our, our Hometown Pride coach Kathy had hooked us up with this notion of a, of a student-driven project through the University of Iowa. And, and that would be basically somebody's senior, senior project, um, in, in a planning program, I think, to where they would come in and, and take a look at, at our project. And it's not just, you know, designing a building for a, for a community center, it's comprehensive look at, at how the, how the community would engage with the community center, and, and is it supported, is truly is a planning, uh, uh, planning process. Now, we, let's see, to, to know that, that, uh, North, the University of Iowa has shown some interest in our project, okay? So we made it through at least like a first kind of screening, and that they would anticipate that they'll come up with the projects that they're gonna choose in February. So there may be a chance that, that we have the opportunity to work through a student-led process, which I, I think would just be terrific.
And they would look at it, Terry, and.
I know.
And then when they're done, bring it to the community, and then the community could vote it up or down. Is that, is that what I?
And then you're getting an impartial person.
Right, right.
You know what I'm saying? You know, I, and that's gonna go out in due diligence to find out everything that we need to find out. Because there might be something that we, we overlook, or you know what I'm saying, that we don't think about, like I said. But it's important to be transparent about everything out there, so everybody sees what's going on, and, and, uh, that way they can make a rational decision, because they got the correct information.
You know, I guess when, when I look at this, and, um, I would like to be involved with the project a lot more. And, and I know that, that some folks think it should be, some folks think it shouldn't be, and I'm really looking for, for some direction about, about the way to go. But, you know, when we do this, and we work towards the stage where there's sufficient information for, for public, uh, public input, yet, that, you know, you're really comprehensive about project design and building design, and then you're looking at financing, and you're looking at operations, and really, it is, it's a very comprehensive look at, at how everything would, uh, would design and operate. So it's not just a short-term thing, it might be a long-term. But, um, I, I would suggest, you know, that, that as we do this, we work through our Hometown Pride Committee now. Now, it's our Hometown Pride Committee here for the next six months or whatever, but that likely morphs into our Great Places Committee. And then it's just a, a project that's very consistent with what the Great Places goals were.
We can't have a motion to make you part of this until the next council.
Yeah, you know, I guess it wouldn't have any.
Can't do it tonight.
Hey, is that, do we need a motion on that, or just tell them to do it?
I'm sure Scott would like that a motion to back him up.
I don't know if you could make a motion if it wasn't a loop?
No, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, it's not, you know, but, uh.
Well, I'm not, I'm not ready to bring it up next, you know, let's, let's, let's just make it happen. I mean, you know?
Put her down the agenda.
You gotta have something to bring to the public.
Right, yeah, exactly. Dave's right, that's.
I think something we gotta do though is, I don't care if Hometown Pride or Community Club or who run, that's something I think we need to stay away from. I think we need to, if you're gonna do it, you need to hire somebody to, the manager, and, and do it that way, cause I think they tried that over the wall, like, that did not work for their, their council, or whoever to come in there and run that place. You had too many bosses.
Well, yeah, that, that, we gotta get to that step.
Well, I know that. And I mean, that's one of the things that ought to be on the top.
First, the first fight out is if it's feasible, and then if it's feasible with, with our business plan. You, you gotta go through certain steps to make sure that you.
I know.
Cover everything, but, but you're right, you know, that thing.
I think down the line, I think that.
That's part of, that's part of the.
Operations.
Operations of, that we gotta make sure that the public is for the project first before we talk about operations.
I just, that's something.
But they're gonna have questions about those operations also.
Right, right, but they should be part of the thing, suggesting.
The business plan really has to be.
Yeah, we gotta get that all, informations there, so. I, I, I think we need to bring that on the next agenda, and just try to get staff involved in it, and the mayor.
Well, that's a good point.
Well, I just think that's a very important, cause that's been tried before, where you, you know, and it maybe works down here at, uh, Stone Pier. You know, cause you did different groups in there every time, but you, well, you almost gotta have somebody that's one person or a couple, just a couple people running that, or it, it won't work. I think they tried that when, uh, when the cafe opened up, didn't they? When Ryan's first, before Ryan's.
Yeah, all the investors thought they knew how to run one of them.
Oh, yeah.
That didn't work at all.
And that didn't work at all.
Too many chiefs.
Yeah.
Okay. Good, gang, thank you, I appreciate that guidance. My, my next thing that, that I highlighted here is bicycle rentals. And, um, and I bring this up because the, the issue's coming up here to us hit shortly. Cause we, we have had a private individual, Nora Schultz has, has approached us, you know, would, and she'd be interested in operating a bicycle rental business. Okay? But, and she's, she, she would purchase the bikes, she would own the bikes. And, but as she's looking at her, at her business model, you know, it's not one of those businesses that is sustaining if you have to pay staff for it to happen. So really, what, what we were talking about, you know, is it, is it feasible then for the, uh, for her to own the bikes? But that the staff at Camp Crescent would assist in the rental process, in the rental process?
And we're gonna get a piece of the action?
And then we, yeah, and then we would be paid, you know, it's a rental fee, or it's a per-transaction fee, or something.
So would those bikes be down at Camp Crescent for when they're?
In their own building.
In their own building?
Yeah. Well, what happens is, is the city liable if there's an accident?
So, yeah, so I was asking Wicker about, about that, and he was checking with the insurance company. And, um, this was a funky answer from the insurance company, cause you. And this was a funky answer from the insurance company, because you could be as as proactive with your coverage as you would choose to be, okay? And meaning, you don't, you don't need to provide any additional insurance. You would ask Nora for a certificate of insurance, naming the city as an additional insurer. And if you would desire to buy additional insurance over that, you certainly could. I'm sure they'd sell you some insurance, but you wouldn't need to.
And it'd be no different to me than going up to Minneapolis, and they have these bicycle renting stations all over the place. They even have those little car renting stations, like.
They have all the.
The bar people, they have those all over the place.
So so you wouldn't have to worry about safety equipment?
Well, you could require them to wear helmets, and they have to buy a helmet for whoever's got the business.
We would.
You know, they had those in Hawaii, those stations, I think, like what Dave was talking about. And they were kind of like a bike rack, in some way they're locked in there, and you paid, there was just like a.
Credit card.
Coin thing there, and you put your money in, and you took a bike away, and away you went. I mean, there was no helmets, there wasn't anything, so I I don't know what is, what is to demonstrate that? Rent a kayak down there.
I think, I think like up in Minneapolis, and I'm not sure about this, but you have to use your credit card in case the bike doesn't come back.
Right.
Oh, yeah, that could be true. Yeah, that could be true.
And in that case.
That would be her deal.
Right.
Yep.
That wouldn't be the city's.
But we don't rent many kayaks anymore. Most people have bought their own.
Yeah, and that's the, that's the other diff, the difference between the bikes and the kayaks also is that the city owns the kayaks. You know, they're exclusively ours. Where in this case, we we wouldn't own the bikes, we would just be the, the agent, rent them out.
Didn't they try this a few years ago? In one, we was in the donut shop out over there. A guy trying to rent bikes up on the.
It's just another amenity. If you're at the campground, wanna go bike ride, and didn't bring bikes, go around and get them.
I ain't saying it's a bad idea. I mean, some people would try to do it.
If they're at the campground, I think it would be a huge hit.
I do, too.
And and the other, the other thing, biking is a lot more popular now than it was back then.
So then the city would have a contract with Nora?
Unless we have a trail that I think is, even though it's utilized a lot, I think the potential is even greater.
I do, too.
And I think people come to that campground. When we talk about the campground being up this year, and maybe I'm living in Alaland, but I believe that Splash Pad is a huge part of that. It is a huge part of people coming to town, spending money uptown, whatever. And I think that bike trail is a hidden gem that we should promote more than we do. So I think this would be a great idea.
And I guess really, it's, it's more having the elected officials, you'd have to enter into this agreement that says it's okay for a private person to operate and make money off of, off of the property, which is public property. And and you'd have to be okay with that. And we just need to write up an agreement that that suits the the city's needs as far as assuring that our, that our costs are covered and and that any of our liabilities covered also.
And we did that with the little.
Big shop.
Big shop guy, and then when I was staying.
That where he grilled down there.
Same concept.
Same way.
Kind of same way.
Well, because the alternative, you know, we're not gonna buy bikes and start renting them out. I mean, that's not what we're gonna do, I don't think.
This is getting that part of the monkey off our back, and.
Yeah, and and so this way, you know, means, otherwise, it won't happen. So I think this is the only way it can happen, and I know for, my kids come here from out of state, and they'd love to be able to go rent bikes somewhere.
Expect to hear.
You've done a lot of work on it.
Um, you know, the next thing that I highlighted here, and again, folks, if you have anything, make sure you bring them up. The highway corridor plantings or beautification was actually mentioned as as somebody's priority, one of their long-term, I think, priorities. And I know that comes up from from time to time, but didn't score necessarily very well about making some aesthetic improvements to the, to the highway area. So I'm just interested in your comments on that.
Were you talking about the signs, or what?
You know, plantings, you know, cleaning up, you know, whether it's, whether it's junk-related, and that's nuisance problems, or whether it's more attractive plantings there.
That out east, I know always, I go by their bus a lot, and I always think that looks pretty tacky. You know.
It's pretty tacky?
Not very good.
Really? Brad just redid all that like years ago?
The sign or the, or where?
Not the sign, the the plantings and stuff.
Yeah, he just did, he just redid all that, didn't he?
Yeah, it did.
Right, yeah.
Couple of years ago.
Well, I don't think it's a little bit much.
And I think he still goes out and and, you know.
They say how they're drilling once, oh.
Yeah.
And he doesn't get paid a dime.
Well, that ain't the point. If it don't look good, then it don't matter, so.
I guess I was, I was more thinking corridor here through, through town, from TNS and up past, past Ennis, you know, that, just that area.
TNS first, yeah.
And and our, the property there by the city shed to is identified as as a project site. You know, there's someplace where you could actually do an improvement project.
We could have a big bike out there.
There you go.
Didn't we discuss that one?
A big bike, we did discuss that.
It's in the back window, but we haven't forgotten about it.
Um, next thing to to note, I just highlighted new features at Splash Pad, and whether we ever wanted to to look at a different feature down there. We had one thousand six hundred sixty-nine dollars that was left over. That, the foundation has that now, but it's earmarked for Splash Pad improvements. And we, there may be some interest from community groups about some enhancements down there.
What were we talking about one time? Like a, one of those xylophones or or the?
Yep, and I'm getting some more pricing on, from different providers on that, too.
We had talked about that one.
I do have some pricing on it.
Does that have to be confined to the Splash Pad, or can it be like the Stone, Pier twenty-five, or would?
The money's earmarked for the Splash Pad, but there's additional monies that we could use for, for Pier twenty-five area, too.
I think if you could improve the Splash Pad, I mean, it's a win-win. I, I don't know, you know, I guess, is there, that was Hometown Pride Committee, so I guess whatever they think is.
Yeah, there's, it's either two or three of those flush mount sprays.
I think there's three of them there.
Um, you could take off the flush mount spray and put on an elevated feature. And that, I guess that's what I'm talking about here, is they're, they're made so that we could do that at some point. A little, little update on the boat slips in in Camp Crescent. Then I I did hear back from, from the DNR, from Ryan today, who said that's actually a commercial problem, and directed me to Kirby, but said that this may, it may be feasible, and that in fact, the DNR wouldn't issue a permit for that, but that it would be a city issue. So anyway, it's been deferred to the, to the city, and if this is something that you wanna pursue, you can. I'd ask that you think long and hard about that before you wanna do that.
There's a lot of money involved in the docks out there, and.
There, I I would tell you, there's, there's just a huge public perception issue, too, about public land, and you're putting boat slips on, so. Anyway, we certainly have that discussion, and just know that that it's likely is feasible, if you want to. I also wanted to highlight this thing about providing high-speed paid Wi-Fi in Camp Crescent. So just a little bit about our current setup with with Wi-Fi in Camp Crescent. We offer a, what is it, basically a slow-speed free service there. Coverage, coverage is pretty poor, and we limit streaming. You can't stream, you know, certain sites are blocked, so you just can't use them, okay? But it it's just an amenity for for our campers while they're there. Now, out at Thirty Acres, they're taking this other tack, and they partner with Corn Belt most likely on this, where Corn Belt installs all of the, all of the hardware, and they would install a system that is, you know, just blazing fast internet down there. They wanna sell a good product, but they are selling it, and would involve, I think, a little bit more staff time as far as being able to to get folks accustomed to utilizing this, and they get on the internet, and they can, they can access the, they can pay a fee somehow to to access this high-speed in internet. But I guess I would just throw that out there as an option, and see if there's ever any interest in in having Corn Belt at least come talk with us and and see what your thoughts are.
Do they have that at a lot of other campgrounds?
And it's just, seems to be going that way more. You know, is there, there's Wi-Fi, absolutely. But do you pay for it or not, I guess, Dave? I don't know.
How much is it? The campgrounds I've been to, no.
Don't have internet?
I was excited about this before, you know, when we were getting internet down there and stuff. But with technology now, you know, I just haven't heard anybody using it. Because on your phone, you know, I just discovered here recently that, you know, a lot of the companies like Verizon, you can make your phone a hotspot.
Yes, you can.
Oh, really? Because I have that on my phone. And a lot of people have that automatically on their phone. Some people like me, I have to pay five bucks a month and have a hotspot on my phone. And you can use that hotspot with unlimited data, and watch movies and do all that stuff. So you wouldn't need to public Wi-Fi that is unsecured. And the big thing, and I, and I think when I, when I go to. Why do not it not work?
Mine don't work either, why?
You have to use a smart, smartphone.
Yeah, but the Russians will never find me. There you go.
I got a smartphone down.
The other, the other side of that is, you go into a hotel anymore, and they're not providing the free internet access like they used to.
Well, they turn up Wi-Fi in my view that would carry it into that.
So I don't, I don't know. It'd be, it'd be interesting to see what Thirty Acres does with it and see, you know, before we make a decision, I guess. You know, unless we have a bunch of campers that are, that are wanting it, or whatever.
Do you think we should have, at some point, maybe not a high priority, but to have Lee talk to us? I guess I'm wondering, the thing I was wondering is if we're putting in these newer, bigger spots, and we have, you know, I didn't even know until this year that we have how many campers that are down there all summer. And is this something that they're gonna be interested in? Because would you use your hotspot that all that time? I, I don't, I guess I don't.
Okay, with unlimited data, well, you know, if we're gonna have a lot of seasonal ones, why not offer cable TV for X amount of dollars, too? You know, a lot of camp, campgrounds add that, too.
But I don't think, are they even able anymore? They stream.
But they, they're.
Right, which is why you need the Wi-Fi, but, you know, the the negative part of that is it's an unsecured network, and, but Lee could tell us more about that than we could. So it wouldn't, wouldn't hurt to listen to Lee and see what.
Most of them workers that are here for the summer, like work on road structure and stuff like that. I mean, a lot of them guys, you know, that.
Yeah, but it's, you'll have for more of our seasonal people come here to stay for the season, and it's recreation.
Yeah. Well, that's good. I mean, it's just, I know a lot of them are workers, too, but we might not have any big road construction facilities around.
Plenty of windows, guys.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, they're, they're getting them in Sac County now. They're getting dicky about that.
So, had he interested, gonna have a week, I think we should line him up, have him forward, tell us what we're gonna do.
Sure, good. Uh, next thing, I guess, just real quick on on this ported place safety surface, that there's a citizen interest in in us upgrading the safety surface down there at Pier twenty-five. And I met with a couple of vendors here real recently about getting some prices, and they don't have the prices yet, but.
Is that similar to what's falling, yes?
Is that that rubber padding, is that?
Well, it it is not. The tiles, it's not tiles. It's port, it's ported in place. And they said that folks are really completely going away from the tiles to this ported place stuff. That is just, you know, it, it is just all one level surface. I mean, boy, there's just no, no undulating in that at all, you know. It, it, so we had, we had them here to to get us some information and some pricing on that. Just, I guess, just know it'll be, it'll be an expensive deal. I'm just not sure what it's gonna be. But if we wanted to look at this, there is some citizen interest in this, and there may be another citizen-led initiative to to try to get a project done.
Hey, I think it could go along the same way as Pier twenty-five went originally. It could be some fundraising, some city support. But I think you need to make really sure that this product is what you want down there, because I've, I've heard some, when I mention it, I've heard some negative stuff, but I, but I don't even know if I'm comparing apples to apples, because I don't know exactly. I don't know what Sac City has. I don't, you know, I just, I just think we need to know a lot more about it, and I would think the Hometown Pride would be the vehicle for that.
Yep, and our park board is working through this now, too. But, and you talk about Sac City, that's what they have up in their parks, is this ported place stuff. So that was, that was their new project up there the past couple of years.
And have they had any complaints about that, or any injuries or anything?
Uh, not that I'm aware of. No. People generally, I think they really like this stuff. And and we investigated this when we put in Pier twenty-five, but we had to make the decision not to do that related to cost.
It was over fifty grand, wasn't it?
So fifty thousand.
If I remember right.
Uh, we flipped to that, to the next page. We get to what are some, rated some of the of the lower priorities. I I highlighted enhanced a business incentive package, and again, just noting that we finally implemented a business incentive package this year, so I don't know that we're looking at any changes. Would tell you, I have our first application on this that you're going to see coming up here shortly, and it's from Brotherton Chiropractic about the improvements they made there.
Oh, that crown.
It looks nice.
Yeah, it does.
And the remainder of their building, they had to make some roofing improvements then when they took that that catwalk off that other building.
So what does that pay?
It's a grant of up to five thousand.
Oh, because I need to put a new, like, over, uh, hardware, so I was gonna reach in with the new shakes and say, it wouldn't cost that much.
I say we gotta talk about, because there's minimum, there's minimum cost on the project, then, too, in order to be owned.
Oh, probably. I don't think it would cost that much.
Couple of other things that I noted, more different playground equipment. Again, know that really, two things are are talked about a lot now, and that's the musical instruments, like a xylophone or something, okay? And the other thing would be to replace the merry-go-round. And I've got some, some options and some pricing then on what to do with the merry-go-round there then, too.
I think it's still a cool merry-go-round. Took all the cool slides away, and now we've got these plastic things. But I sure would like to see that xylophone down there. Wow, I just think that's awesome. That's all I got to say about that.
You just wanna go across the street and go play.
I do. It's pretty. It's, I, that one at Sac City is just lovely. I love it.
And and the last thing that I would have chose to to bring up here is residential sidewalk replacement incentive program. This was brought up to me by a citizen. You know, would, would the city ever consider getting into a program to assist folks who have sidewalks right now with the repair and replacement of their sidewalks? Because I would tell you, you know, I've heard from, from a couple of people here recently, within the past couple of years, you know, and and the answer, or the question basically was, I don't wanna have to repair this thing. Can I tear it out? And I said, no, you, you have to maintain your sidewalk.
That's not working too well.
Well, the thing is, there's not, you know, my, our, the sidewalk on my street ends and my driveway, and everybody uses that sidewalk and builds on my driveway to go, then they gotta go out on the street. But there is no sidewalk all the way up to the west end of town.
You look around, what news you doing? We have to tell them they have sidewalks?
Yeah, probably, yeah.
It's pretty hard to make someone repair and put in their sidewalk when their neighbor doesn't even have one. It, you know, it's a huge thing, but it's kind of, it's gonna be very difficult to figure out how to handle it, too. So I guess if, if maybe this is an option to do, even to do not necessarily replacement, just to put installation in there. I, I think it might be, I mean, I wasn't too big on this, because I guess I didn't really understand, but if we want the sidewalks to be increased, maybe this isn't a bad way to do it. but if we want the sidewalks to be increased, maybe this isn't a bad way to do it.
I think if you have to get a grant for it, though, what, you would have to go to what, like a four-foot sidewalk at least?
Oh, yeah, you need to put it in just to put on your side.
And you'd almost have to treat it like a street project.
I've seen this in some towns north, though. They did that. I don't remember where.
Because there are communities that do this, but really they have made sidewalks a community priority. And that they would take a segment of the town each year and say, we gotta work on the maintenance in this area and then the installation of new sidewalks in this area. And they force you to do it, which everybody hates to do sidewalk projects. It's just, you know, politically, it's terrible. People don't necessarily like them. But there are communities that do it. But this could be a much smaller project, you know, about assisting with maintenance.
An incentive thing could be a real good start.
Yeah. Really, that's the only, that's the only thing I highlighted.
Well, I wanna back up to that, the dump. What is our plan for the dump? What plan, what are we doing? We're not doing anything and how long is that gonna last?
So here's the alternatives to, the two things that are pending out there yet. You wanna talk about the concrete?
The concrete, if we stockpile enough, Chewie will come in and grind it up and haul it away and won't charge us for grinding it up.
That's probably not a problem.
Yeah, that keeps us from filling up that dump out there with cement. He wants enough there that it pays for him to bring his crusher in, so that's why.
I would think there'd be enough there now.
But he'd like to have as much as he can out there. It won't be as fast as we'd like it. He runs well different speed.
But we're no longer burning.
But that, yeah, so that's the other take, was whether we would ever burn. And as of now, I mean, it looks like we would not ever burn. We wanted to, we got contact information on two or three grinding companies who could come in and we could give them a try for grinding. You know, the other alternative, though, is to just keep pushing things over the edge. And of course, it fills up, but we got a large area to fill. You know, we could do this for years.
How many years?
I don't know. I don't know how many years.
The guy that grinds up the wood, he wanted ten thousand dollars to come down and do it. So he wanted to make sure we had plenty to do it if we were gonna do it.
Well, we could cross that once we get it all.
So if he did it done, can he go down in that area where we pushed it?
Yeah, they can reach down with a grapple and bring it back up.
So if we filled it up and then we got nowhere to go, that would be an option at that point then to hire someone to come in and do that?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know that it's a real practical thought for you. As soon as it gets all dirty and everything on top, they have a tough time grinding.
Well, after we get it filled up, the new stuff that comes after that.
Oh, sure, yeah. Anything stockpiled on the ground, they can.
Over and above.
Like, were they, the soap, were they pumped into them from the lake last year? From the, you know, they wouldn't, D and R wouldn't let us burn out there. There are a lot of waste ground.
Where we dumped the Harvester stuff?
Yeah.
They were okay with us burning that Harvester stuff, weren't they?
I talked to Healy a couple of times. They're supposed to put that, because I piled up there with dead grass and they were gonna shove it on there with their end loader and then Clint wanted us to burn.
Well, but if they would care if we, instead of dumping the trees by town here where they can't burn, if they would go out there and burn.
Might be a big step.
Or by the, by the sewer, new sewer road out there someplace, you know. Is that gonna have a gate on it out there too in the end? I thought so.
Because they got defensive material block, which is how we gotta go.
And I would think that'd be, you know, far enough away from town.
Well, I wanted to go up to assist a living facility. We agreed to pay a portion of the.
Yep, of feasibility.
Feasibility study, any wood on that or?
Again, the last time that I talked with her, it was supposed to be done after the first of the year. And I've not talked to her since the first.
They had half done, they thought, a while back.
But, yeah, she had told me how much the study was. I was surprised and it was relatively cheap, like our share was. Maybe the total was twenty-five hundred dollars.
So where was you thinking about putting that?
Um, yeah, you know. They would look at it because that would be a private venture on their part. We would just, we just wanted to assist them in some.
Kind of like Wall Lake or that, you know?
And I'd just like to keep the door open for us to be able to assist them like we would any business downtown. You know, I mean, because it's so important to the people of Lakeview.
Well, it would be for the whole area. It would be a huge.
A huge development that I think would come back.
Well, again, people, you got, not only you got the residents, but you have the resident's family come visit, you know, different types of.
I like that where, like Wall Lake over there, they put that downtown like that so that people can walk to the grocery store or walk, you know, on Main Street.
But assisted living isn't what Wall Lake now.
There would be some medical care, levels of medical care.
But anyway, I just wanna keep that on our radar so when, if that actually happens, that we're prepared to be a partner with them.
Absolutely.
Well, we haven't called and bugged them because we didn't want to be a pain.
It would be nice if they could get that study done though.
Right.
See where it's going next with it so we can.
One thing that the county's working on, that's not on this list, that whether, and they don't know how it's gonna happen or not is their new radio system and stuff and, you know, we got the fire trucks and everything. And they don't know how it's gonna happen or anything, but that's a pretty expensive project. With the fire trucks and police cars and stuff, we may wanna start, you know, it may happen down the road or may be patched into the project or whatever. But however it happens, even if we don't need the funds, but we might want to start setting funds aside for that, for the fire trucks and police vehicles in case it were to come down to where we can't be patched into it or whatever. Because we have to replace all the radios or whatever. But that's just something, once more of that information gets down, they just have, are going to have their first meeting or something.
I was just gonna say, have they developed the timeline at all about?
No, I know, talking to the sheriff, Carroll County is gonna work a lease program with the provider. But, you know, there's, it's like over five million dollars or something like that. I don't know exactly, but it's an expensive project. And if we get new radios and stuff, those are pretty expensive. So if we start putting money aside now and then if we find out that we don't need it, then we could just incorporate that back in the budget or whatever. But I think it'd be important.
Is that the community the sheriff was talking about?
Yeah, he did mention it. He did mention it.
Yeah, he wanted.
So they did, they invited the communities, especially with the police department. But they wanted representatives from the community to sit on this interoperability task force or whatever it is that they're calling. So we do have our representative who will be sitting on the task force and it's Jimmy Carles.
But, I mean, just to keep that on our radar too, as far as starting to budget.
Well, we've done a lot, done that pre-plaid with.
Well, that's kind of what I was getting at is, you know, with a truck, dump truck, we hands it.
I have a couple of questions too. Should we not be putting any money away for that bridge a little at a time? I mean, that bridge is gonna cost a lot of money. And how long is it, just how long does that weight limit restriction they have on how? I mean, how?
That's up forever.
Sure, so here's, you know, the status about that weight limit is that, you know, it will be there now from here on out. So we have an annual inspection done to that bridge every year. We pay this engineering firm a few hundred dollars to inspect that. And that's how it came to light this year that the substructure is getting pretty weak on that. Now, it's also their suggestion then that we would start to do some planning on that and get some ideas in place about what might happen with this as we work towards a replacement sometime in the future. And they had mentioned like ten years. But it also is planning right now to get our name into the city bridge grant project. And, boy, we were in, we funded basically that grant, the bridge out there north of TCT on the Browell Road. You know, that was funded through the city grant program. And the county did all the administration on it and everything. We didn't hardly notice. But it'd be kind of like the same deal. We need to be working towards the stage now where we can at least get an application into the grant program because it would sit there for several years before we would rise up probably high enough in order to be able to be funded.
We did kick in twenty-five thousand for that bridge too.
Twenty-five thousand. That's a good road. That's a good bridge. Now we need a road. That's a bad road.
So you're saying, Scott, that we need to move ahead with this?
Yeah, I do need to work with that, with the engineer. I got the, I got the bridge report in the mail today. And that kind of was the next step, at least to know that they've finished up the bridge report. So, and they've noted then that we posted the bridge with the signs and we're compliant in that regard. Next thing would be, yeah, start working with this engineering firm to come up with some rough designs sufficient to get this grant application in. So, and we can do that here anytime. Start working with them on that, I guess. Just know that there'd be some fees associated with that to work with this engineering firm.
Well, I don't know at what point we need to do it, but I just wondered about it.
Well, I think sooner rather than later. And there's no harm, no harm to us to start in that right click. You know, get, and get our name into the mill, into the grants to eventually work our way to the top. Because really, that's about the only way that you can afford that bridge. They're crazy expensive, I think.
Because it takes two guys a year to make them, right? They don't put any crews on bridges anymore. It takes more.
They should, it's too bad they can't do like they did out there where Renzi bought Jack Johnson's place. Now there is no, I mean.
Oh, yeah, that box cover, yeah.
Yeah, full box cover, is it?
Have a different.
And the campground project, is that just, is that a go now for this next test period? I mean, where are we at? I mean, I can't remember what decisions we've made on that. Is it all, already all decided and we voted on it and cleared it and it's gonna start bid letting or?
No, that, I want to incorporate that into a budget draft and we'll see how we would pay for that. That's really the next step, is it'll be, it'll be in the draft of the budget and we'll see how we come out on dollars.
So we have, the guys approached us for the golf course. Anybody got any thoughts on, you know, they asked for ten thousand dollars.
I'd like to know how much money they got aside, or how much they have available before we go.
So they have given me a profit and loss.
Oh, okay.
And I get that.
I've heard a lot of negative about it. Yeah, they figure if we do something like this, then we might as well be helping every single business there. Is the same way, you know, we'll be here, yeah.
But I didn't get much feedback from, I didn't get all the contractors calling me, but I've had a lot of people come and say, why would you give the golf course any frickin' money?
I haven't had any comments on that.
It's a slippery slope, I think, when we go.
I think it is too. And as much as I'd like to help them, because I think that it's almost like an amenity, but it's not really our amenity, even though we use part of it. I mean, like our campers, I mean, I've never been out there on a Saturday or Sunday and some of them, there weren't campers out there, so. But I do think there'll be backlash from supporting something like that by the people that don't golf.
Well, I'd like to see us put like fifteen hundred bucks in there for the Hometown Pride committee. It's the Hometown Pride Men's Club, Community Club in the city that makes everything happen. They always had to come to us for two hundred dollars or something. I'd like to see us add that to the budget.
I would too.
The last page in here was, well, folks had listed as the top three priorities. And then I guess I'd just defer to y'all, you know, as far as any explanation about why you would choose these as your top priority. Is there anything that you'd like to lobby for? Anything that you don't feel is being adequately represented?
Well, I think both slips, to me, that's not a necessity priority for me, so, I mean.
I'd rather get the campground project itself done before you.
The campground project would make us money. Very few things would make us money.
It's like, you know, talk, that'd be expensive for you.
It'd be hard to pass that down to them guys the first year to be fucking back on to them.
Well, out of that, you gotta pay, you and ours, so much every year for how many slips you have there. So, I mean, it's not a cheap deal. Trust me, they don't.
Easier to do other projects and not get them.
Development of farmer's market area, what, I guess, what kind of developments?
Well, for shade.
Shade?
That was by twenty-two or something, or twenty-two five or something.
Well, I don't know if I can hear everybody, but, you know, we looked at shade down there, which I thought was vital. I was hoping that we could get, you know, like S E T D grants and other things like that. Scott talked about, when I went down there and looked at it, Scott talked about, you know, putting some more cement towards the east of that so we could do some off-street parking during the winter, which I thought was a great idea. You know, I'd also like to see some kind of a structure that we've looked at in some of the catalogs for the kids to play down there. And I just think that when people come to the farmer's market area, whether it be during the farmer's market hours or I guess I've always seen with that bakery, I just think that area could be utilized more. I think that needs to be more of a pocket park than just this thing you drive by and look at. And on Saturday, you know, it's just a cool thing, the market's in there and we got stuff going on. But when we try to do those other projects in there, it is hot, terribly, terribly hot, which if you put more cement in, I guess it's gonna be hotter yet. But I don't know now that, you know, but they came up with this sidewalk around the park. Maybe this, maybe we aren't gonna be able to get enough money to do this this year. I really wanted to see it happen. I wanted nicer tables, which John did get. There are nicer tables there, but I was hoping we could have some little tables with some shade that people could go from the bakery over and have their coffee and whatever, but.
The other thing, I don't know what kind of shade we're talking about. But you probably wanna make sure, find out what we do with that building first before we.
Exactly.
That's something you probably haven't been getting done this year.
Exactly, that four-way main has to be decided before we do anything. So I almost think the shade is kind of on the back burner until we see where that goes and we see what, you know, if they're able to do this sidewalk with that grant.
As far as shade, you can, these tents you can buy them for from ninety-nine to two-hundred.
Yeah, we go through, free every year at Sip and Sample.
Well, that's, it's just something you can put up and, you know, you have to.
Cattle shade works good.
Just don't put the cattle in there. That's expensive.
Fifty-six hundred about, you know, them things are. That makes you.
Well, good. Anybody else have any, anything? I don't want to keep you any longer. We got a football game on here, but there's a couple of things.
What is it, the redesigned Blackhawk Lake Trail, what is that? Is that just to try to continue the trail around the lake? Is that what that is?
Yes, I think so.
Oh, I see it, I think.
That one we're the best.
I, I would, I would tell you, this, uh.
I see it.
I just got this email from, from Tyson Beckman today and it's just very short, uh, would the, would the city ever consider selling this property? And it's, it's a piece of, of land there, Vicki, uh, on the, on the slope of the water tower hill, but it's the east parcel over there by Cooks Island.
Okay.
So, you know, Tyson has been looking for a place to, to construct a, a building that would, would house his appraisal business and then also some of his property management stuff. I need to do some, some checking on this to know whether we, whether anything runs through there related to the water tower. Whether there's any, any, uh, water lines that run through there or not.
How far away from the water tower would he be?
That's the big white thing, you know?
It's quite a, quite a hill there.
It's on, it's on the side of the hill, yeah.
So what about on the other side of the road, east of, or, um, yeah, east of the plant, what is, we own that?
Yeah, it's privately owned, uh, Jeff Frank owns that.
Oh, Jeff Frank.
He talked about a house a couple of years ago, but.
He, oh, he has and I haven't heard anything from him on that for quite a while.
Is that commercial or?
That's commercial.
I think he'll probably.
Well, what do you think, barely nothing, did he say?
No, this is just a, a, an email interaction, that's as much as that, no.
Just throw it out.
Yep. Have some, some interest in building inspector position, so I think this hopefully can come to be, Buzz Julik is, is really interested in, in the.
Buzz Julik.
Buzz Julik? Campground entrance? Tom, Tom Buzz Julik?
Okay.
Okay, right there, uh, at the entrance by the campground, you know, that's where they live. Dogs and contractor.
Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah. He's working on a house out there by, uh, by Keefen Top.
We're gonna have some.
By Neil Stein Camp, right next to Neil, yeah.
Oh, okay.
He's building that.
Well, we'll have discussion then next Monday about, uh, several things related to planning and zoning, but one of them would be to institute, think of it as a, a certificate of completion. We'll call it a certificate of zoning compliance that says you've built your structure the way that you, uh, had said that you would in your, in your permit. And at the end of the process, then you would get your certificate of zoning compliance and then the pro, the project would be done. That has some impact then on what we do with a building inspector. And whether there's some additional inspection that's involved and how I might be compensated for that, so we'll have that discussion next week.
Is that, is the applicant aware of that?
Yeah.
Possibility, okay.
So we have three applicants?
No, well, no, this is just building inspector.
Oh, oh, got it, I'm sorry.
Working with the DNR now too about how they can assist us with the funding on the herbicide and harvester. You gotta make some contract changes to where the city had always, had always contracted with the herbicide applicator. And we, we would be the one to pay the herbicide applicator and we're reimbursed from the other parties. So, from a contractual relation, then, the city is actually the person contracting with the folks who put the app, the chemical in the lake. Which is against DNR regulations for that to occur. Only the DNR could be the contracting agent for something like that to occur. So, the DNR is going to contract directly, same provider, and they'll contract directly with them on that. And then, for the past couple of years, we've received this grant to offset, uh, the cost of the herbicide and of the harvester. So what they'll do is completely fund the herbicide, cause the guy go through the state. And then, we would still, uh, likely, we still hope, receive some assistance, uh, with financing the harvester. But that amount would be less because they're doing all of the herbicide, that makes sense, so in the past years, the past two years, the grant amount has been thirty-three thousand dollars for the herbicide and the harvester, and that would change this next year, uh, proposed to be at thirteen thousand dollars. Okay, which actually is a few thousand dollars more because the, the total herbicide cost is about twenty-two. So we, we still come out, actually wrote, wrote that on that, so. FYI, and, um, more planning and zoning stuff that'll come to the, to the council next week and, and it's, Planning and Zoning Commission has asked the city council to consider placing a moratorium on building chouses, on building these, these large storage areas with, with residential premises in them. They've asked that the city would consider placing this moratorium on new construction of those until, uh, until this issue on design standards is, is settled. Okay? So, just know that that, that issue is coming to you and I've asked Dave Jenner for some guidance on that about, you know, whether it's legal to do that, whether, uh, you know, if, if it's legal, how do you define how the moratorium might go into place? I think there's, there's a lot of things to think about on it.
There's a lot of gray area there.
And, um.
Lot of gray area.
And as I was talking with Dave a lot more today, um, you know, it's, it's very apparent he needs to do a lot of research on this. And. Well, it's just that, I mean, I mean, it's gonna, the cost of this is a significant amount of, of legal research on this, so.
I just, here's what I think, I think that they've already hammered through a lot of this, I think we are so close to having this finished product, I just don't think this thing needs to go on and on and on and on, I think it needs to be decided, it needs to end, we don't want it to go on.
So you mean, end not letting nobody build it?
Well, you know, that's, the, the motion from the P and Z is to place a moratorium on, on chouses during this time when we're finalizing design standards. Okay, now you come up to an answer with what these design standards would be, you know, about, about how they might be implemented, or the other side of it is just to say they're not going to be. You know, they want an answer either way. And then, but you get to the end of that, you come up with an answer that lifts the moratorium on chouses. It is a city council decision about whether you would implement a moratorium.
I think people do that so they have a place for storage and living.
And as of today, Dave is doing a lot of research on this and he will continue to do that.
You gotta have a ducks and roll in that deal.
That's why we need to make a decision and get this finished.
I think about T and S, I used to, we talked to, what do you do about that?
He's supposed to.
In that, in that street, we sent him like, I'm freaking noticing June and nothing's gone, getting done.
Yes, but, uh, here's, here's my one little bit of good news, Weber's court date is the twenty-fourth.
That's for about, like, county other.
Yeah, that's that six fifty-seven A action out there on the house.
Motion to adjourn.
Check it.
All sectors.
In the jury.
Hi.
Hi. Well, don't get sunburned.